And good evening. Welcome to the Marion City Council Workshop for the month of November of 2021. We're going to begin with our Pledge of the Flag. I'll ask Councilman Haynes to please lead us.
And thank you, Councilman. The records reflect that all council members are present and accounted for this evening. We'll begin our business this evening with a review of the minutes from the October 6th and October 9th meetings, October 6th being a regular meeting, excuse me, October 19th was a special meeting for audit presentation and other business. Is there any discussion on the minutes as presented to you this evening? All right, if everyone seems satisfied, they will be up for your approval on Monday evening. Next, I get to make a proclamation. November annually is our Municipal Government Works Month. All municipalities in the state recognize this, and we do some special activities within the city to show the importance of municipal government to the people. So with that, whereas the city of Tawny Town was established in 1754, and whereas the city of Tawny Town is one of 157 municipalities incorporated in the state of Maryland, and whereas the mayor and city council recognize and celebrate that municipal government represents the most responsive level of government, allowing citizens to have direct access to elected officials, and whereas, in an effort to educate citizens about municipal government and the importance of their participation, the city of Tawny Town is proud to promote municipal government awareness, and whereas municipalities have enhanced the quality of life for their respective residents, maintaining natural and historic sites and structures, and helping to make Maryland a great place to live, work, play, and explore. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the Marion City Council of the city of Tawny Town, Maryland hereby joins the Maryland Municipal League in declaring November to be Municipal Government Works Month in Tawny Town, signed on this fourth day of November in the year of our Lord 2021, of the founding of the city of Tawny Town, the 267th. Let it be proclaimed. You'll see the flag flying in front of City Hall. Just as a reminder, the importance that municipal government is to our people and the role that we take, we do so very seriously. Moving on from there, we're going to continue into asking the council if they have any conflicts of interest on anything on the agenda this evening.
Yes, sir.
All right, no conflicts. We shall move on. I'll invite members of the public, if you have any comment pertaining to non-agenda items. If what you want to talk about is not listed on this piece of paper, we welcome hearing from you, and please step up to the lectern, give your name, and you may speak for a brief period.
I'm Barbara Cook, resident of Tawny Town. I've been bugging you for two or three months about forming a nonprofit foundation for the purpose of restoring the historic buildings in Tawny Town. Well, recently, I've been in Arizona visiting family. I could talk with them about this plan freely, which I did, and I got new ideas and different ways to approach it. Therefore, I won't say anything for a couple months until I get something more concrete.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Anyone else from the gallery have any comments on non-agenda items this evening before we move on? All right, with nothing further, we will move on. Up for adoption Monday evening will be the Sewell Annexation Agreement. Let's open that up for discussion. Jim, do you want to take yours? Do you want Jay to lead us on that?
I can think set the stage on it.
Okay, please do.
Essentially, it's the same agreement that we saw several months ago. The contract purchaser, NVR, who we also know as Ryan Holmes, was a little uncomfortable with some of the lack of detail or commitment as to us allocating facilities to the project, to the development of the parcel. So number 17 in the agreement that's in your packet basically adds a sentence that says that if the contract purchaser and the owner don't make a deal, that the contract purchaser is relieved of their obligations under the annexation agreement. That's essentially the big change. Otherwise, it's the same things we agreed to several months ago.
Okay, I don't recall 10B in the last contract. Was that in there about locking in our current fees?
I believe that was.
Mr. Gallow, was that?
Correct me if I'm wrong, please.
That was, that was in there, and we told, we talked to you about taking it out. And so I believe in the version you adopted said that we were not going to lock in the fees.
Right.
Because we had that discussion about it. So this is resubmitted, and, you know, our advice to you before was we don't know what the fees will be whenever this happens, and that should be removed.
Right, that's, that's my thought. We had agreed to remove that from our side as well. My primary concern being the way we see MDE constantly changing, we don't know what they're going to put on us in the next five years that might necessitate these fees to be increased to cover improvements and such to our facilities. So from my viewpoint and to the council, I do suggest that we remove that again like we did last time.
Mayor, your fees that you've set now are about 15 years old. That's when the calculations were done 15 years ago, and it's time for a new one, and it certainly will be then. As far as the new provision, because we assume that you would want that out, but as far as the new provision that is brand new to see you, that's just a legal technicality. They have an interest in the property when they're a contract purchaser, so the Sewells can't do this by themselves as long as the contract purchaser is, is around. But if they don't go through with the contract, then they would just fall out. That's the purpose of that.
All right, I mean, that, section 17 really does not include us in any way, shape, or form.
Right. It just means that their contract purchaser is not obligated to do anything if they're no longer involved in the transaction.
Right. Well, I guess where I'm kind of sitting is, I have no problem with being there, but I'm not sure why it needs to be there since our annexation agreement is between property owner and us, not the contractor. Is that correct?
Well, that is correct, but a property owner, they, once they have a contract of sale, the contract purchaser has an equitable interest in the property. So therefore, we need to have them sign off on it. Same similarity, if they had a lien on the property, you'd have to get the bank to sign off on it because they have an interest in it. So that's the technical reason they're involved at all. Otherwise, we wouldn't care. For example, when we did the Meads Crossing one, we dealt with, the property owners were signing everything. And then Meads Crossing, it was annexed before Meads Crossing came in, the actual developers.
Right.
That makes sense.
Right. So they're not pushing for a, a way to un-annex if they sever?
No.
Okay.
They just don't want us to look to, to the developer. They don't want us to go to them and say, you're obligated to follow through on all these things. If they're in, they're in. If they're out, they're out. Sewells are always in.
Right. All right, members of council, do you have any questions or anything? Mayor Portem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to say I'm in agreement with excising that particular portion about the fees because we don't know what the future is going to hold. But at the same time, I also do want to bring up, I guess, a general concern. I guess you'd almost call it teleological because it would purpose-driven touch on just about everything that we are talking about tonight. I note that in the agreement, the proposal is an R10,000 for community village designation, and that it would consist of 340 single-family homes, 170 semi-detached, and 170 detached. So I know I brought this up a couple meetings ago with respect to water and sewer infrastructure. I have a few more concerns that I'll bring up as well, but do you have any idea of the magnitude of the impact that such a, such a new development would have on our existing water and sewer capacity? I know every month we have the water allocation plan, and I know, I figured it was what, maybe about a year or so ago I brought up that we seem to be consistently in the 30,000 unallocated gallons per day, and that at some point we were going to seek more from the state, but we never, you know, we never have moved forward with that. So I'm, the first question I have this evening, is this something that, in terms of our infrastructure, is something that we could deal with?
Not currently. So we believe that we will have the capacity available by the time the property is approved for development. So we are working with Carroll County on obtaining recharge acreage through some properties in our aquifer that have county ag preservation easements on them. And we, of course, as you know, are working on inflow and infiltration sewer remediation projects, the first of which we hope will be in the ground by the, by late spring. And through those projects, we believe we'll have capacity when the Sewell property is ready to develop.
Now, another, thank you for that, Jim. I guess, you know, another question I have with respect to this also goes back to the, to the fees themselves. And I, you know, I don't want to get too much into this, and Mary, you can tell me to desist until later in the agenda if you think it's proper. Halloween night, I was out with the police officers, and we were handing out glow sticks. And it was really awesome to see how many families were out that evening. But it was also almost staggering to realize that, you know, we were running out of glow sticks pretty quickly, especially in areas of new development with all the new families that have moved in. You know, I mean, with respect going back to the, the fees themselves, looking ahead at the future, I almost feel like, you know, we've got to be careful about setting any fees and setting them in stone for any agreement, which is why I agree with removing these fees because in the future, you know, with more residents, we're going to need to increase the number of police officers we have. We're going to have to increase the size of the police station and the facilities at the station in order to compensate for increased population growth. And so I guess I am concerned that, you know, at present, we all, we already do not comply with our adequate facilities ordinance. And so as we, if we continue to outpace our ability to provide services by exponential residential growth, I'm worried about being able to catch up. I'm worried about being able to provide proper services, you know, as the time comes. So I guess my question with reference to that is, do we have any sense of a general timeframe about if we, you know, if we move forward with this and we agree with the annexation, do we have a general sense of the timeframe between the agreement and the construction of the development?
I would say it would be well over a year. We will need to seek a water and sewer master plan amendment, and depending upon when the annexation becomes effective, that will drive which, which amendment cycle we'll be in. So the timing there is going to have a big effect on how quickly that water sewer master plan amendment can be done. Until that's done, no lots can be recorded. And comments from the county coming back, if we start reviewing a subdivision plan, are going to basically speak to the fact that it's not in the right category in the water and sewer master plan. So there's kind of a sequence for things to reach any level of approval. So they, they may be able to get a concept approval from our planning commission contingent on the water and sewer master plan being amended, but when it comes to anything beyond that, until that amendment's done, we won't be able to grant preliminary plan approval, or certainly not final subdivision approval. So there's, there's kind of a sequence of things that needs to happen. And of course, the, we really want to have, you know, at least, at least our first I and I reduction project in the ground and have some real numbers rather than estimates before we get too far down the road also.
So if we're estimating?
Easily a year.
Okay, so easily a year. And then beyond that, is that at the point at which construction would begin? Are we still looking at a couple years before construction itself physically begins?
Once, once a plan is approved, it's really up to the developer how quickly. They, they are supposed to start construction within a year of approval. And I would imagine that the, the market at that moment will probably dictate how quickly they put, you know, start pushing dirt around out there.
So we're looking effectively between one and two years?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you for that.
All right, I'm going to ask another question of either Jim or Jay. In regard to 5C, is there really a need to even mention community village in this sort of an agreement? I mean, we're not talking about the development here. We're talking about simply annexing the property. I don't, I don't want the city to be tied into, or even be assumed, that community village is going to happen for their development. Is there a reason that this is included in here?
I can take that. They requested that because all along, they have said they desire to get community village zoning. It would be illegal for us to promise them community village zoning. We can't contract zone, which is what that would be. However, they wanted it spelled out clear to let you know this is their intent from the very beginning, that they are going to come in as soon as they can and ask for community village zoning. And so they have a right to do that. They wanted it memorialized so that there was no surprise that they were going to ask for that.
So as we've discussed at this table previously regarding community village and our zoning, in this, it specifies property shall be zoned R10,000, and they want community village overlay. We've discussed, why would we not just make it R6,000 and get the same density without the complexities that are ignored for community village? So are we truly being tied into a zone with this agreement?
The R10,000, you are. I mean, it's not, it's not guaranteed, but that's what they would come in as, is R10,000, and that's what you would want to zone it. That's what you're saying.
But is that what we, is that truly what we want? That's my question. And that's more a question for the council, not for you.
Right, it's okay.
Right.
I mean, I don't mind starting a conversation about that. I mean, I know I probably sound like I'm repeating myself here, but really, for me, it does come back around to whether or not we can provide adequate services for a new projected development. I mean, I guess at this point, and I really don't want to go into too much detail about this unless everybody wants to, but, you know, again, with the increasing population and the need to be in compliance with adequate facilities, the water and sewer, and all these different moving pieces that need to be in place.
But that's not going to be a zoning thing. I mean, because they're going to, they're going to seek the same density regardless of how they're zoned. I understand what you're saying, right. But, but the discussion I'd like to have is, do we want to be locked into R10,000 and go with a community village ordinance that I don't believe we're all happy with?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Have the other parties involved articulated specifically why they want R10,000 as opposed to R6,000?
I believe R10,000 enables them to do community village.
Have they articulated why they want community village?
For the density.
And so if they can get that same density with R6,000?
Well, that's kind of my point is, and maybe that's something Jim's had more discussion with them on that.
We haven't really brought this up with, with the Sewells, but understanding that there has been some talk among council about areas where community village is lacking, or the fact that we've had two projects constructed under the umbrella of community village, but neither of those really fits the community village ordinance, the, the actual code on it. There, there are certain aesthetic and, and design aspects of community village that neither Carroll Vista nor Meads Crossing have, have implemented. And there's been some talk about, well, we should revise community village because nobody wants to build what community village currently is. And I've suggested that if all we're interested is in density and not any particular aesthetic, that perhaps we should consider other zoning districts and not focus on community village.
Right. Now, our advantage on community village from municipal standpoint is it gives us a say on the aesthetics, on the looks of the, of the houses. It kind of gives us another step that we get to approve, yes, this fits an aesthetic that we want, assuming that it follows everything else in community village, which, as we've previously said, nothing currently standing has complied with that ordinance. So if we go straight R6,000, they get the same density, but we don't get to have any say in what it looks like. So with Meads Crossing, they presented to the planning commission, this is what the houses will look like. Planning commission said, looks good, or no, you need to change this, this, or this. Community village allows us to do that. That's an advantage on our side for community village. There's always the ability that we go back to our community village ordinance and make it what we want it to be truly, something that people will comply with, and something that we will stick to and make them comply with.
And, and just another note on the community village versus rezoning or bringing it in at a higher density zoning. With community village, there is a density bonus, but that, the idea behind that is that the developed area has a greater density, and then there's a larger remaining open space area. So part of the community village plan is to preserve more open space and put the houses and the roads kind of in a more compact development pattern. If you were to go with a higher density zoning designation, that, that, you know, preservation of open space is not really part of those higher density zones.
Great.
So in that case, the limiting factors would be the number of units that might be specified in an annexation agreement or in a development rights and responsibilities agreement, something like that. But the zoning district itself would not preserve that open space like community village does. So, but again, if council is unhappy with community village...
We need to change that.
We, right. Those are conversations we need to have. And it may, this may not be the time to do it right now with Sewell, although before the annexation is final, there could be tweaks made to the community village ordinance.
Right.
So just, just a thought, that if the aesthetic is not of concern, and we just want the higher density and, you know, less infrastructure to support between each dwelling unit, you can achieve that through other means.
So my other question while we talk about zoning is, they want it zoned R10,000, I get. Obviously, they want a waiver of the five-year rule with the county. When we go to the county requesting that, are we going to tell them that it's actually going to be higher density than R10,000? I feel like that's something they would need to know.
They will be evaluating that in, in their, their in-house annexation review and reports to the Board of County Commissioners. So they will be well
Okay.
aware of the plan.
I want to make sure that when we say we want it R10,000, that we want them to waive the five-year rule, that we're honest and say that the intention is the five-year rule, that we're honest and say that the intention is that it's going to be more dense than R10,000 in reality. That's my concern. I don't want to skate into a tiff with the county because they feel like we misled them a little bit.
Certainly. And we do have a county planning liaison that attends all of our planning commission meetings and so on, so.
Right.
And of course, we also, through our town-county agreement, do need to keep county planning in the loop when we are considering an annexation.
Right. Okay. All right, any other discussion from council?
If I have a general want for definitions, would this be the time or a different time when we're talking?
Depends on what you want defined. If you want to know what a car is, that's a different part of the discussion.
You mean, it's not internal combustion?
Right.
Okay. So R7,500 says that it can be multifamily structure, so R6,000, what exactly, like, how is a multifamily defined in that sense? I would think if it's even less space, the idea is that it would be possibly apartments.
Be talking, multifamily would be like a duplex, not necessarily an apartment building, but like a duplex or something like that.
Would that be semi-detached? Right now.
Jim? Lee, are you looking at permitted uses or perhaps special exceptions?
It's just the FAQ for Carroll County Government.
I'm sorry?
It's just the FAQ for Carroll County Government, where they define the different-
Well, you'd have to look at our code, because our zoning's a little bit different than what theirs is.
So, and I'm doing this from memory, so I don't have it on the screen in front of me, but R7,500 permits single-family dwellings by right, and it permits semi-detached and multifamily, like apartments, by a special exception. Most of you have been involved in one way or another to remember the Tonnytown Crossing project. There was a, that had to go through the Board of Zoning Appeals for special exception use to do those semi-detached, or a lot of people call them duplex dwellings. Our code calls them semi-detached, as well as the apartment building. So they're in R7,500, and those uses are special exceptions in that district. But in R6,000, that is our highest density residential district, and those other uses are permitted by right.
Very good. So I'm not saying that community village is not the best option for us, because it does give us some abilities to control aesthetics and preserve green space. I also want us to really think, over the next couple of months, how we really want community village to be in the city of Tonnytown. Because this is an opportunity for us to make the changes that haven't been done. How long has community village been on the books? Pre-Carroll Vista?
At least 15 years.
At least 15 years, right.
Yeah, I'm not sure when Carroll Vista started construction, what, 2002, maybe?
Right. So it's had no amendments in that time, I believe, the actual code itself.
Right. The only thing we've done is add some language about DORAs.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more comment.
Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
So the last point of concern that I would like to express this evening is traffic, right? You're talking about 340 new homes, you're looking at, what, between 340, 680 new vehicles? And, you know, we're already in a place where we're trying to convince higher levels of government to, you know, accede to a bypass. And if we have been thus far unsuccessful in achieving a bypass, if we know we have some traffic concerns, and then all of a sudden we throw 340 new homes into construction just down the road from the square effectively, that is something we have to take into consideration, that we're gonna have much more traffic, still don't have a bypass, and, you know, we do have that square to contend with, plus the through-traffic, the truck-traffic, and-
Plus the intersection of Parnell Road, that is not a great intersection. That's where we have to lean on state highway, that they require certain improvements to be made for this project.
Traffic lights, and, right.
Whatever it is. Looks like community village was ordinance 7-99. So, there we go. Those are very good points. And I know between myself and Mish, we've had a lot of conversations ongoing with several people regarding the bypass, and we're pushing as hard as we possibly can.
Right.
We've involved now, you know, senators at the highest level, as well as state people. But you're right, we don't have it, and we're looking at adding traffic, especially an intersection that is probably one of the worst in the city, because it sits at a very bad angle and has a lot of traffic. So that's a very good point to take.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And that's it for me.
If I could just add a little bit to respond to Mayor Protem's comments.
Yes.
So this often creates a rather unpopular situation for the planning commission. So assuming the SUL farm comes in, it starts going through the development process, they will be required to do a traffic study. That study is going to follow accepted traffic, you know, engineer guidelines, it's gonna, you know, use a certain methodology to study intersections and volumes, and it's gonna give the intersections a letter grade, A through F. So obviously, A, it's flowing perfectly, you know, no backups, things like that. So our adequate public facilities ordinance requires that streets under the city's control reach a certain, have a certain level of service, and streets, state highways, you know, get to go a letter grade lower than city streets do. What we typically see is even areas that we as residents see as problematic do achieve the necessary grade level on a traffic study.
Right.
So by our own code, if they meet those criteria, or there's some mitigation that the developer can do, like lengthening a turn lane, which was what was supposed to happen with Meads Crossing at the square here, you know, that is their ability to mitigate their impact on the traffic. But generally, the intersections that oftentimes people think are, you know, at a poor level of service, according to the code and the way the traffic studies are done, actually have passing levels of service. They're usually, you know, As and Bs.
Right.
So what we see as congestion that's problematic is not really seen as problematic by either the city code or the way the traffic studies are done. So when we do annex a property and we set it up for a certain zone, that basically, you know, gives them the ability to apply to develop the property. And at that point, it's just going through a process. So if we have the water and sewer capacity, the traffic study comes back and says nothing is failing, we basically need to approve it.
Right.
So that, again, is something to be mindful of. So it can result in some unpopular public opinion sometimes.
Well, and that's a good point, is we've seen traffic studies done, most recently here at the square. We disagree with the results of the traffic study, but by their logic and math, they think the square is acceptable. And we could fight it until we're blue in the face and die, but they still think it's acceptable. So that's another thing we need to keep in mind, is we are working on different standards between ours and state highways.
That's a good point. That's a very good point. Thank you, Jim. And thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Of course. I don't know that we'll ever see eye to eye with state highway, unfortunately. Any other questions, concerns regarding the annexation agreement in front of you? That will be up for your adoption on Monday evening? Then the annexation resolution will simply go, that's gonna go alongside of that, is that correct, Jim?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
But you have to adopt the agreement.
Right.
Or you can't do the resolution.
The resolution, right. So for the purpose of tonight, does anyone wish to discuss the resolution, as we just talked about SUL's annexation quite a bit here? All right, so just understand that on Monday evening, there will be two separate votes being made, one regarding the agreement, and the other being the actual resolution of annexation. Okay?
And just, Mr. Mayor, I don't want to interrupt, but I want to make sure everybody's clear, that does not do the annexation. That simply starts the process, and you will have the opportunity to vote yes or no on the annexation after a public process that will take many months.
Right. Next, up for your adoption on Monday evening would be Resolution 2021-19, Paper Alley's. This is a specific request that a resident wishes to have a unowned piece of property surplused by the city to give them the ability to get a deed on it and own it themselves. We discussed it last month, we kicked it to this month, so it is once again in front of you. I'm first going to ask, Jim, is there any changes to this at all since last month?
No, I think we will have some comment later in the evening regarding this from the gallery.
Okay.
So the involved property owners are both here this evening.
Very good. Is there any discussion from the council regarding the Paper Alley resolution? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, you know, one of the, probably for me, one of the most important clauses or whereas's in the resolution is the sixth one down where it talks about the intention of the mayor and city council to convey whatever interest the city may hold in this dedicated but not deeded strip of land, et cetera, et cetera, to ensure that the neighboring property has an easement right of way for access to their property, and that this transfer from the city in no way alters or jeopardizes their access rights. So while I'm happy to see that in there, I guess the principal concern that I would have is that I would feel better if that particular phrase had the phrase "in perpetuity" somewhere in it, so that if the current owners happened to sell or the property is passed along, that all future owners would also have that same right. I don't want to set a, put us in a situation where if we do decide to end up deed-ing the surplus, that future owners are, I guess maybe encumbered would be the right word, unfairly encumbered by something that was done by property owners before them, over which they in perpetuity do not have any say. I don't know if I made sense, or-
Yeah, I think what you're asking makes sense. I guess the question is gonna go to Mr. Gallow. Do you?
Yep. That's not a problem. It was implied, but it's better to spell it out so that there's no question about a license. A license is less than an easement, but still accomplishes it. So I would suggest that you just add comma "in perpetuity" after that sentence that the Mayor Protem read.
Before you do so, can we add the word "irrevocable" to it?
Sure, you can add that as well.
I can add anything I want, I know.
Exactly.
Not just-
And then people sue you anyway.
Right, exactly.
Right. The issue, the way I had seen this happen, if you move in that direction, is that if the city is going to sign off on this, the other documents would have to have been prepared. And after they're prepared and recorded, it becomes irrevocable. So it's only revocable in the time period it takes to get everything together. So I would say that you could put "irrevocable" as where, it doesn't add or detract, but it makes it clear that it has to be forever.
Okay.
So should we say whereas it is the irrevocable intention of the mayor and city council?
No.
No, I think it's at the end.
To ensure that the neighboring property has an irrevocable easement right of way for access to their property, and that this transfer from the city in no way alters or jeopardizes their access, uh, hold on.
Perpetual access rights.
Perpetual access rights, I like that, yes.
Perpetual.
Yes. I just, I really want to, if we do this, this is what's giving me the most headache and heartburn on this, is the fact that there's someone else's driveway on this piece of property. And that's what I want to make absolutely sure, that if we decide we're gonna surplus this, that they are protected in every way humanly possible.
I'm in agreement.
Right. Other questions, concerns, general inquiries, definitions? Okay. That will be up for adoption Monday evening, and if we see fit, there may be those amendments we discussed added to it during that time. Next up, Resolution 2021-20, this is our monthly water allocation for November 2021. Discussion, anybody?
The math checks out.
And these are the numbers for those watching at home or from the gallery here. Mayor Protem Vigliotti mentioned the water allocations. We're talking about the potential growth of SULs, as to how much gallons per day we have available or could have available by that time. We go through and approve this each month to kind of help the mayor and council be aware of what we have, what's been allocated, and kind of where we stand. If there's no other discussion on that, we have Resolution 2021-21. This is a fee schedule for 2022 addition of pavilion rental rates. Mr. Reprick, you want to throw this at us first?
Historically, we have not reserved pavilions after October, and we've had some interest recently from groups that would like to, while they've been informed that beyond the rental season, the pavilions can be used just first come, first served. We've had folks expressing an interest in actually reserving them and planning events to be held out at the park in the, I'll say, off months, off-season. So if we're going to go through that effort to do the reservation and have them come in, sign the agreement and all that, we need to have some kind of charge for that service. But we don't anticipate the same level of need as we would have in the warmer months when we're out there having to empty a lot of trash, you know, from the park in general and from multiple pavilions. We kind of expect this to be a lower impact than the summer months, and thus, we felt like a lower rate for the off-season use would be appropriate. So that's in the revised fee schedule that's attached here. So April through October would be $75, and then November through March would be, we could still reserve the pavilions, but it would only be $35.
So kind of a non-peak fee is what it is.
Exactly. So kind of an off-season rate. But again, it's still, we will still need to make sure we get out there and, you know, we'll need to make sure they come in, sign the agreement, have, you know, there's some administrative time involved in that. And also, we will need to make sure that the pavilion is in good shape and ready for use. So, but again, we're not gonna be out there spending as much time in the park as we will during the warmer months when we have multiple pavilions rented each weekend, and that takes the crews, you know, longer to prep everything and then go back and empty the trash that day because it's rented again the next day, and so, less demand.
And that could always change. I mean, we're definitely seeing much higher pavilion usage than we have historically, and I think we're gonna see that improve now that they've been renovated. They look nicer. I think as we see the concrete floors going in, we're gonna see probably even more use of these. I believe at one point, there was discussion of whether the pavilion fee was enough at this point. I mean, it's been 75 for some time now. Is there any intention of increasing that fee?
Not at this point. We certainly can have that discussion as we're nearing our budget approval process. Typically, we kind of reevaluate the fee schedule each year. You know, in past years, there seems to be a little appetite to increasing any charges on the fee schedule.
Right.
So, and as Attorney Gallow mentions, you know, some of the things on that schedule, such as our, you know, water and sewer benefit assessment fees have not changed for many, many, many years.
Right.
And, you know, we have a different list of projects that have to do with providing that capacity now than we did many years ago when those fees were last really reviewed. So that is something that we can delve into for the coming budget year.
Right.
So out of curiosity, if we were to go ahead and pass the schedule of fees before us, is this something that would be open for us to amend, say, a couple of months from now, or six months from now?
We can do it every month if we want. It's, obviously, we'd like to lump things together whenever possible, but-
Right.
We do reserve the ability to edit this whenever we feel the need to do so.
Since this is done by resolution, it's very much like the water allocation resolution that you pass each month.
Right.
So, you know, while I certainly would not advise that, you know, that it's set by resolution to make- you know, that it's set by resolution to make it easier to do than if it were set by an ordinance.
Right. Then we'd have to codify it every time we change a little fee.
And I just wanted to make sure, though, that that was a possibility. I'm not, certainly not advocating, you know, every month, but, you know, again, going back to sort of what we were talking about a little earlier is, you know, I think we do need to revisit some of these fee, fees, because, you know, times have changed, circumstances have changed, the situation overall has changed. And if we're operating on, you know, a lot of these from, what, 15, I think 15 years ago is what the number was, I think it's certainly, you know, material that we reconsider a lot of these fees. Again, especially in lieu of potential new development, too, so.
Well, and let's, while we're here, let's have that discussion because you have one highlighted that I think we should discuss. Public safety impact fees. Is that tied to building permits like the water assessment fees or?
Well, the impact fees are supposed to be in response to the city's expense to provide the capacity that's related to the growth. So our water and sewer impact fees, for example, were set based on an evaluation of capacity building projects that were either in the pipeline or had been done and we were paying for. So, you know, to use the city attorney's grocery store analogy, you know, we buy product to put on the shelf. You know, our product is water and sewer service. So we spend money to build the capacity to have that product on the shelf. And then when new homes come online, they buy that capacity, you know, and we sell the product.
Right.
So our charges are supposed to be related to our expense to build that capacity. And the police impact fee really should be set in a similar way. So we have been having conversations about renovations at the police station relative to the increased number of officers, which again is only going to grow as the city grows.
Right.
So while we think that, you know, we're functioning, we are at an adequate level now, this is a good time, knowing that we have additional growth very likely coming, to plan for some renovations and possibly, you know, additional square footage at the police station. If we come up with a figure and say it's going to cost us, you know, $400,000 to renovate the police station to accommodate growth, then we do the math and we say, okay, that's going to allow us to put on three additional officers and still function appropriately. And that is going to be good for, you know, with our two officers per thousand ratio per population. You know, that's going to equate to this many houses based on, say, 2.4 people per house or whatever the current number is at that point. Then we say, okay, so we've got $400,000. That's going to be good for, you know, 400 houses. Okay, it's $1,000 per house.
Right.
So that's kind of the exercise we need to go through to reset an impact fee like that. So the police one, I think, would be relatively straightforward. We can't, we can't roll things like capital equipment in. If we could, it would be set much higher right now because we buy a car, we buy, you know, weapons, we buy all kinds of equipment.
Right.
It's, you know, it's expensive to equip a new officer.
Right.
And we don't have, you know, I guess they refer to it as hot seat cars where, you know, you've got one car in service across multiple shifts. We have, you know, a patrol car for each officer.
Right.
So, but those are things that aren't supposed to be paid for by impact fees. Those are not capital improvements for the city, so.
And let me jump in as the voice from above here. I think that the legal aspect of it, rather than giving it to you now, I'd like to write a memo to you and we can discuss it some other time. But there is a legal aspect to what we need to do with that. So I'll just leave it at that and let you ponder what that might be, but it's somewhat involved.
I think it's a discussion we need to continue to have. And there's, we've had the adequate facilities ordinance now talked about a couple of times. Mayor Protem Vigliotti states that we're not in compliance with it. And City Manager says that we are, and I think both are true. And the reason I say that is, by what's written on paper, we are adequate. By real life, I would agree with Mayor Protem that we are not. Reason being is, we have, right now, as of the last census, 7,234 residents in the city, which means we should have 14 police officers. If you look at some of the numbers, it says we have 15. Well, you have to consider that at least two of them are admin. They're not on patrol, they're not on the streets. One of those are not a sworn officer. So in reality, both statements can be true. What's on paper says, yes, we are adequate because we have so many officers. In reality, when you take out those who are not responding to calls all the time, we, I believe we are below what we should be.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just interject really quick.
Sure.
The official census results are 7,235, but data that came to us from the county, the estimate is 7,765 residents in town.
Right.
That's already, you know, way above the census. And if I could, one more figure here. The census counting officially ended on October 16th, 2020. From October 17th, 2020 to today, that's, we have 206 new homes that have been built. So we are, we've already gone beyond what the census says we have.
Right. I agree with you. But again, my statement is that both of those can be true. It's kind of Schrodinger's thing where it's, they can both be true at the same time, depending on how you look at it. But these are all things that as we see growth, as we experience growth now and as we plan for growth in the future, we need to be acutely aware of the impacts that we're making. And I appreciate that all the members of council and staff are paying attention to those things. We've gotten a little off topic here.
My apologies.
That's okay. I took you there.
That was a good trip.
But I'll drop you off here. We'll go back.
I guess I got to ride home then.
That's right. All right. So anyway, this is regarding the pavilion fees, specifically adding on the November through March. Is there any further discussion from the council regarding these? I think it seems like a reasonable request.
I agree.
Very good. Then on Monday evening, that will be up for your approval and adoption. Mr. Weeprick, do you have a city manager report for us this evening, sir?
I sure do. Since we're running a little bit long, I'll try to do this quickly. Won't give you everything from the capital improvement program, but we've met with CDM Smith, our engineer, and revisited some of the projects. And it looks like we have more terracotta sewer pipe in the system than initially anticipated or initially estimated. With that in mind, we would like to move forward with cleaning and televising all of the known terracotta pipes so that we can evaluate the condition of each segment and develop project specifications for requests for proposals to replace or line, depending upon the condition of the pipe, over time, all of that terracotta sewer pipe. So CDM Smith had developed a specification, an RFP actually, for sewer cleaning and lining. But at that time, we were only focusing on the Meadowbrook Interceptor, and so we did not end up getting any bids. So we eventually worked, had some conversations with one of the providers and agreed upon just a basically cost for that specific project. It was, you know, half a day at X dollars kind of a thing. But with having 25,000 linear feet to clean and televise, we expect that if we do put an RFP out, that we will get responses this time. So we plan to move ahead with that. And of course, any such award will come before you. The, we paid about $3 a linear foot for televising and cleaning with the Meadowbrook Interceptor, so this will not be an inexpensive proposition, but it's going to give us the information we need to better develop our inflow and infiltration remediation projects. So, and let's see, moving on, we already talked about the Sewell annexation and Trepantian Terrace. The sidewalk and the curb and gutter along the middle school there, King's Drive, has been replaced. And the kids now have a proper sidewalk to walk between schools again. And good timing here. We do expect a blasting contractor to be mobilizing in the next week to two weeks. And they are going to be blasting possibly twice a day. And we are going to, as soon as we have the blast schedule, we will make sure the front office is aware of that and we'll also throw it out on Facebook and put it on the city's website. So we will try to get word out to everyone. And residents of Trepantian Terrace have, are receiving postcards from the county as well. So for your information, there is going to be blasting. That always generates a lot of chatter, both social media and a lot of phone calls to the city office. So just so you're aware, that's going to be, that's coming up.
Oh, Jim, I'm sorry. Was there a date that that was scheduled for?
We expect it to start next week.
Next week.
But we don't have a final schedule yet. There's still been some discussion with the blasting contractor.
So with that, when the city receives it, they're going to put it on social media. I encourage everyone on council, as well as those watching, if you have social media, please share that. Make sure all of your friends know, make sure all your enemies know. That way, there's really little question what's happening.
And as soon as we have the schedule, we'll also share it with you so that you're aware of the details. Last thing on the report, CDM Smith has completed 90% sign specs for the Meadowbrook Sewer Interceptor. And again, that's the section between the New Bridge to O'Brien Avenue and the York Street Pumping Station. So that's going to be our first big INI reduction project, you know, in recent years. The last one that we really had where we saw a big difference was, well, of course, when we built, when the bridge was built, we did a segment of pipe there and saw a drastic reduction in wet weather flows at the pumping station. So we're hoping that this is going to yield similar results. I do want to call your attention to a memo that was on the table for you this evening about sole source purchase. So we've had an influent pump shaft break at the wastewater treatment plant. And this is a sole source kind of piece of equipment. We have four Flowserve pumps that basically take the flow from where gravity ends and then they pump it up to the headworks at the wastewater treatment plant. Right now, we're operating on three out of the four pumps. And the shaft that, so a lower shaft broke, that's being replaced. But apparently, Flowserve will only do the shafts in pairs. So if they come out to inspect or repair one, they're going to look at both the upper shaft and the lower shaft. So they found that the upper shaft was also damaged and that throws it out of balance. So that shaft can be repaired. But we've also seen, typically at the plant, when we have multiple units of the same piece of equipment and one fails and they've been in the same kind of service environment and service hours, the next one fails shortly thereafter. So we want to order a replacement upper and lower shaft for another influent pump. It's expected that that's going to take 22 to 24 weeks to get here. So we would like to go ahead and order one so that if we have another shaft break, at least we've got one on order and the repaired shafts are not covered by any kind of warranty. So we really can't afford to have, you know, more than one of these pumps go down at any given time. So we're kind of limping as it is with three out of four pumps when we have a big storm. So the reason it's coming before you is because when all is said and done, repairing the damaged shaft, replacing the one that was destroyed, and then acquiring a new set of shafts totals $25,670, which is $670 more than I can approve. And also, of course, this was not something that we, you know, have budgeted. It is operation and maintenance, but, you know, we were not expecting this expense. So we may see fallout from that down, farther down the year, farther along in the budget year. So Monday night, we'll be asking for approval for this expenditure.
So the intention is to have a new upper and lower shaft on hand?
Yes.
So is needed to go in service. Will we be sending out the old ones to be repaired to keep on hand then? Or do we have to replace with new to keep on the shelf?
It will probably depend upon, right. So with the pump that's down right now, the lower shaft could not be repaired.
Right.
The lower shaft is actually the less expensive of the two pieces. The upper shaft, I think I mentioned in my memo, is 20 feet long and costs almost $20,000.
Right.
So we want to have the pieces on hand. If a pump goes down because of a shaft issue, we can replace the shaft. We may be able to send out, depending upon the damage, we may be able to send a shaft out for repair and then have that as our standby.
Assuming that, you say they're in pairs, they have to be balanced.
Right.
So it's not like we can just replace the upper if the upper is bad. We'll have to replace both.
So each, well, the upper shaft is, I'm not certain about the lower shaft. The upper shaft is harmonically balanced, so it's supposed to be able to, I think, I don't know if I would say offset the vibration that may be coming up through the pump. But it's, if there's a, what's happened is there's a chip out of the one that's going to be sent out for repair. And that apparently is throwing it off balance. It could have a negative impact on the pump.
Got it. Right.
Down, down the road. So that can be repaired. But that one hadn't actually broken. That was discovered during the inspection when Flowserve came out to look at the pump and the shafts.
Right. I guess my broader question is such, the feasibility of keeping one on hand and the expense of doing so. If we, if we have four pumps that are reaching the same lifespan, are we going to be looking at repair or replace? And are we talking about three months we're going to do this again?
So that's, that's actually something that we've talked about relative to our wastewater planning and compliance planning.
Right.
Is redundancy of materials. So obviously, we can't have every single replacement part in stock. I mean, we're, obviously, we're looking at a single part that's $19,395. So it's just not feasible. But what Public Works and our engineer are working on is coming up with a plan to say, okay, you know, what, what parts can we afford to have on the shelf so that we won't have, you know, a pump or a piece of equipment that's down for weeks at a time? Because as we know, for us to meet permit for our treatment plant, everything needs to work perfectly.
All the time.
So, right. So when we have a pump go down, we're at risk. Even if we have a, you know, a backup, we're still not running at 100% efficiency. So this redundancy evaluation is something that we're working on as part of our overall compliance and improvement plan at the treatment plant. So we may, we may determine that, yes, we need to have two of these on hand. But we're hoping that if we have one on hand, that we'll be able to at least replace it and have something that might, you know, a shaft that might have some defect be repaired. And again, the, the upper shaft is the really expensive one.
Right.
So, and, you know, we may come to the conclusion that we do need to have more than one on hand.
Right.
Jim, do you, out of curiosity, and if you don't know, that's quite all right. I know it's a, you know, pretty left-field question. Do you know what the average life expectancy of one of these is?
No. They, the plant came online right around 2000, I believe, so.
20 to 25 years sounds about right.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, for these pumps, I think we've, we've seen, in the not-too-distant past, we had issues with an impeller on one of them. And then when they tore down other pumps to check for it, they found like hairline fractures in all of them. So we were able to, you know, to replace that part and it wasn't a huge expense, from my recollection. I don't have the dollar figures in front of me. So we are seeing, you know, components fail. And again, you know, the pump, the plant has been in operation for over 20 years now. So that seems to be a reasonable life expectancy for a lot of the equipment that's out there.
So, I'm sorry, just one last quick question. So when we talk about a set of new shafts and guard, how many come in a set? I mean, is it four?
Just upper and lower.
Just, okay.
One of each.
Would it be better for us to have more than one set on hand? I mean, I guess that kind of goes back to your question, Mayor, about storage costs and...
It's just money, right? I mean, we're talking about, yeah, I mean, it's what it comes down to. I think we could, we could store two 20-foot pieces of...
And they were, right, they're, jumping back to that redundancy evaluation, there are certain types, pieces of equipment that we, while we would... are certain types, pieces of equipment that we, while we would love to have a spare on the shelf, you know, there are, there are things that also, if they're not in use, can seize up just sitting there. So, you know, we, we don't want to have certain types of valves that, you know, not that long ago, we had a valve fail, and it took us, I don't even remember at this point how long it was, but we had, you know, one tank down because the valve was, was inoperable. And it took us weeks, if not, if not a month, to get that valve replaced. But that's not something we can have sit on a shelf for 20 years, because it could freeze up. And then we've invested, you know, $20,000 in a valve that by the time we go to use it, it is seized. So, so that's, it gets kind of challenging, and that's, you know...
Well, and that's...
I'm glad we have engineers to weigh in on that sort of thing.
Well, that's what I'm saying, having engineers to say, what can we afford to have on? And then, what can we not afford to not have when we need it?
And what has a certain shelf life?
Yes. Right. Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
So, you're requesting Monday evening for approval to purchase this? Okay. That will be on the agenda Monday evening for the council. Anything else, Mr. Weprick, out of your report?
I think that's probably enough for me tonight.
All right. Any questions from council for the city manager? All right. Hearing none, we'll go to Mr. Gallow. Do you have a legal report for us this evening, sir?
I am going to spare you my legal report tonight, and just because I know you're going to get to some of the things. Spent this month working with Officer Zachadellis and working on the TASER policy. So, when you get to that item on your agenda, we can talk more about that then.
With that, we're going to move right along. Going into new business, up for your approval Monday evening will be the monthly financial report. Assume everyone's had a chance to review. Do you have any questions on that report as presented to you? All right. Hearing none, we're going to go to the accounts payables. I'll ask you the same. Do you have any questions on the accounts payables that I will ask you to approve on Okay. We shall move right along. Item number three, our police TASER policy. This is a request from the police department on entering into a contract to obtain TASERS to be deployed to our officers. Going alongside of that, there will be a general order from the chief regarding the usage of said things, as you heard the city attorney discuss that. There is information in your packet regarding the TASERS in question, what they plan on getting. I'm going to go to Mr. Weprick first. Do you have anything you'd like to add from what is here?
Just pointing out that while we're looking at a five-year contract, the, over the life of the contract, it is over the $25,000 threshold.
Right.
So, we need your approval for it. And this year, we do have, this is not a year that we expect to have to have a, like, we don't have to buy new vests or anything like that out of that particular line item. So, this year, we probably are okay as far as that line item in the budget, but other years, you know, we may be looking at an increase in that materials and supplies item.
Going forward.
Going forward.
For the next year, that's right. Chief TASER does believe that he has the money in the budget to cover the first year of it, but keep in mind in budget season that he will be seeking additional, additional funds to cover this for the next four years then. Any questions in general? I mean, you see the, the pricing in there. We're looking at a total, total cost over the 60 months of $41,400. That is annuitized to just over $8,200 per year. With that, you see the list of equipment that we'll be getting, including the TASERS themselves, the cartridges, the holsters, all the necessary items. I believe we currently have officers who are certified to train in these. Is that correct, Mr. Weprick?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, as Mayor Pretemfik Lightig reported last month, two officers have gone through and are now trained, trainers.
Correct. I think this is something, I'm going to say it's long overdue, to have less lethal options for officers, especially as we see the, the climate changing the way that it is. I think it's important that we catch up to last century and finally equip our officers with better options, that they don't always have to go lethal. Fortunately, that rarely happens in this city. I think because we have great officers, we have great residents. I think it's an important thing. I do hope that the council will see fit to approve this on Monday evening. I hope that you would. Do you have any questions on it now as we discuss, or comments?
Well, just a brief comment. I think it's important that two of our officers are trained in instruction in this, because that means we'll be able to do the training itself in-house, rather than having to pay to do it somewhere else.
Right. If you have specific questions on the equipment, there is an officer here able to answer those. I don't want you to feel like you have to get into the weeds of this. We are not the experts on TASERS, so we generally defer to our police department to do that. All right? If everyone is comfortable with it, then Monday evening, I will ask for you to hopefully approve that for our department to do better. Up next, we have item number four, festival park building demolition. Mr. Weprick, go ahead.
Okay. We have unfortunately seen incidents of folks breaking into the farmhouse that's on the festival park property. We have boarded up the windows and tried to secure it. It's posted for no trespassing, et cetera, but we've had individuals out there pulling plywood off, off the windows, gaining access to the structure and doing damage to the structure. We would like to go ahead and demolish the, the house and get rid of that nuisance that's, that's out there and avoid the possibility of, even though, even though we've tried to secure it and it's posted with no trespassing signs, we just want to take the risk of somebody getting possibly injured out there, even though they shouldn't be there. We don't want that risk, that liability, so we would like to go ahead and take the house down. And we're currently waiting for a little more information on the, because the, the house does have well and septic, that there are kind of strings attached with demolishing the house, that we also have to properly abandon the well and the septic field. So, we're still waiting, I believe, on some final numbers there. If we have them by Monday, we'll certainly get them before you. Scrolling through, trying to find the original support here.
And Jim, if I could ask, I mean, if anybody knows the answer to this, it's my understanding that this was not a building we were going to keep anyways.
Correct.
When development of the park occurred, the building was going to come down regardless.
Right. I think the, the building was unusable when we purchased the property. Yeah. It's just become more unusable. So, you have more information for us Monday evening, you hope?
Yes, Monday evening.
Okay.
Yeah, still, still waiting for the, the well closure...
Okay.
... proposal. So, if that comes in, we'll have that before, we'll get it to you as soon as it arrives.
Okay. Very good. Questions, concerns from council? Obviously, we're still waiting some information, so we'll see Monday evening where that lands with us. Okay. Lastly, for new business this evening, we have a ward of water storage tanks, long-term maintenance plan. On your, at your seat tonight, there was a recommendation prepared by our Director of Public Works and CDM Smith, our engineering firm. We did receive two proposals, one from SUEZ, who actually had two options for us, the other from Southern Corrosion. You'll see in the memo in front of you, it lays out the differences in costs, also some of the known differences in service. And finally, on the recommendation, I believe it is a recommendation from CDM Smith and Mr. Smeeck, that the city proceed with further discussions with Southern Corrosion to clarify technical, technical components of their proposal with the intent to award this contract to Southern Corrosion. So, with that being said, I kind of want some clarification. Doesn't sound like we're ready to award yet. Is that correct?
That's correct. So, as, and I'm imagining that since the memo was just before you this evening, not everyone's had a chance to, to read through it, but the request for proposal started out essentially mimicking a tank maintenance program that SUEZ offers. We learned after the RFP was released that there were a couple items in there that were of, I'll say, a proprietary nature, that, you know, SUEZ either has a, a relationship with the coating company, where they get a, a lower price basically than competitors, or some of the equipment that was used is like specific to SUEZ and not available to other maintenance companies. So, we did an, an addendum to the RFP that allowed us to entertain other proposals that did not have all of the specific detail that was really tailored more to the SUEZ program. And with that, we received the, after that addendum was released, we did receive a proposal from Southern Corrosion. And there are some questions about details of coatings and thicknesses of coatings and things of that nature that do need to be clarified. But assuming that, that, that those can be answered adequately for our engineer and Public Works, their recommendation is that, and it's largely a cost-related decision, is to go forward with, with Southern Corrosion pending answers on some of the questions that were still out there after they evaluated the proposal.
What sort of timeline do they expect to get that clarification?
Probably not by Monday.
I understand that.
But, but within the month, certainly.
Okay.
I would imagine probably within the next week, but...
I guess I'll ask the council if what they're requesting is acceptable to you, or do you want them to get the clarification and come back to us in December to actually approve the awarding of the contract?
I feel like we've been kind of sitting on this for a long time. I mean, just the whole getting those tanks taken care of. And I would, I don't, I don't think a recommendation from Kevin or CDM Smith would be asking. I mean, like, they've already done the work. I would trust their judgment.
I understand there's still unanswered questions. That's all I'm saying. I mean, they've done the work, but not all questions have been answered.
Yeah, once the questions are answered, I think I would trust them too.
So, would we say, I'm sorry, please, Diane.
What would be the situation if the questions aren't answered to their satisfaction?
Right.
Right.
Does it go back to the drawing board?
Then...
Then they'll come back to us and probably recommend the other.
That could certainly, that could certainly change the recommendation.
Right.
Okay.
So, that's...
So, that, that was basically what I was going to ask. If, if we do, you know, consent to this, do we make a contingent on the answers that would satisfy the queries that they've posed? Like, is contingent the best way to describe it? Contingent on the answers?
That would be the, I mean, that's, that's what I want. My thought is, I understand where Councilman Fuller is coming from, but we don't have the answers. We're supposed to award a contract, and we don't have the answers to do so. And it's up to us to award that contract. So, my thing is, let's get the clarification and come back in December for the actual awarding of it. Because I'm...
That's what I want.
Yeah. I just don't like going in blind. It, it may work out perfectly, it may not. I don't know. But I feel like it's on us to award it, and if we don't have the answers, we can't do so responsibly. Any other comments on that?
That should give them plenty enough time to get the answers.
I should hope so. They're not going to be rushed now.
I, I just need to go back, revisit the RFP, and make sure that the pricing will still be good in December.
Okay.
And I can advise on that Monday night.
Well, if that, if that changes things from Monday evening, let me know ahead of time, and...
Certainly.
We can, we can adapt as necessary.
We'll dig into that tomorrow and let you know one way or the other.
Okay. Sounds great. All right. Moving on, I'll be asking for any public comment on agenda items. If what you want to talk about is on the piece of paper in front of you, you're welcome to discuss it. If it is not on the paper, now is not the time. Whoever would like to start, please come up, say your name and what topic you want to discuss, and you may briefly speak.
Mr. Mayor and Council, my name is Paul Caprol. I'm the one that lives at 211 Carroll Heights. We're Resolution 2021-19. Been, I've lived there probably 31 years, built the house back in 1988. Sam Breath actually owned a property beside it, and he always wanted me to have that property there, and never had any problems with, you know, with me having it. Actually, I gave it to Jim. I don't know if you all have it. Back in 2002, Mrs. Breath actually signed over the property to me, but we weren't sure back then who owned the property. I've been, I've had attorney look at it, and I've had actually two sets of attorneys look at it.
Right.
It's one of those deals that nobody knew who owns. It's just one of those paper lots. I have talked to George about that, and at no given time have I ever said that somebody couldn't have a right-of-way to that property. And actually, his wife is an attorney. So, when I, you know, if everything goes good with you guys, I'd like for her to go down with me to the, to the county, when it gets this thing deeded over, so that way she knows the legal end of it, and she can have it legally, stating that there's always a right-of-way to that house.
Very good. I appreciate the comments.
George Gray, owner of the property. I think tonight's suggestion about in perpetuity solves the whole problem. We've worked that out on the last...
Very good. Thank you very much. We'll take that in consideration for Monday evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Rob Morlos. I'm with SUEZ. I wanted to comment on the water tank. I just wanted to make the comment, you know, we really appreciate the opportunity to participate in the RFP. There's a couple of key differences I want to make sure you're aware of. I know that Jim has discussed them a little bit. The, the main one is, has to do with the predictable pricing that we offered. We gave a 20-year price for both tanks, absolutely locked in. There's no escalator, I mean, there is an escalator, a 5% per year. It's shown in that document. My understanding is the other guy didn't provide that, so I wanted to make you, make sure you're aware that that's how we do things. We don't have any future change orders, no future surprises. The other thing I wanted to comment on was if you, you know, decide that, you know, you do want to go with us, our contract terms are specifically for one year, automatically annually renewed contracts. You can cancel anytime. There's no penalty for cancellation. So, that's another key difference. I think, you know, it's great that the, the town is looking to renovate these tanks. We would love to be considered if the other person doesn't work out. I know you have some recommendations and that effect. And I really just wanted to make myself available if there were any questions or anything. That's why I came tonight, so I appreciate your time.
I appreciate it very much.
Sure.
If members of council do have questions, I do ask you to go through the city manager to ask those questions of a vendor, okay? Very good. Any other comments on agenda items this evening?
Chris Tillman, 10 York Street. Just to follow up on those two gentlemen and the paper alleys issue, I know that there are at least two other paper alleys within a stone's throw of this building that, in talking to the, the residents who own properties there, are we creating a precedent? And is this something that the council is looking to unburden themselves of? Because there are, you know, in fact, one of the paper alleys actually has a building built on it. So, I... So, you know, if you're looking to go for, just, just a question, whether you're looking to go forward with disposing of those other paper alleys that you're never going to use as, as streets, so that it becomes clearer to the property owners adjacent who owns it or what can be done with it. You know, because it does beg a question about right of way and, you know, people walking through, you know, well, it's a public right of way, you know, or is it? And so, I just, it'd be nice if we clarified that. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Any other comments on agenda items this evening? All right. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second, please? Very good. We have the motion from Councilwoman Fuller, second from Councilwoman Foster. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. We are adjourned for the evening. Thank you all.